Thank you for joining us here today for revealing our draft map in what is currently the second district. This marks the biggest milestone thus far in this process, a process that began in 2019 when the voters approved an independent commission to redraw the district boundaries. The Syracuse City redistricting commission was formed in the summer of 2021, consisting entirely of citizen volunteers. We all live within the city limits and we are volunteers. We have met regularly over these last nine months and have held public listening sessions in each of the five districts to gather input from the community before starting on the work that you see today. The commission's work was guided by census data, legal requirements coming from federal, state, and local city laws. The commission's priorities were based on the public listening sessions. Not a single line of the draft map was drawn prior to completing those public listening sessions. We listened to our fellow residents talk about various communities and what their needs and preferences were for this map. The most important legal requirement for a new common council map is the five districts have to be the same number of people. The difference between the largest and the smallest cannot be more than about 1,500, which is 5% of the ideal population. The district must also be a single connected piece and of compact shapes. They must also abide by the Voting Rights Act. Finally, the commission is not allowed to favor one political party or candidate over another. We cannot take into account the residence of any future or current candidate.
The commission's priority for this draft map, based on public feedback and extensive discussion within the commission, were number one, creation of a black majority district, District A, which is pink in the draft map. While this is not required by the Voting Rights Act, the commission decided that creation of such a district would be beneficial specifically to the citizens of that district, as well as to the common counselors in the future who would represent the needs of such a district. Our second priority was keeping neighborhoods whole and grouping similar neighborhoods together as much as possible. We heard many comments at the public listening sessions about neighborhoods being divided between two or more districts in the current map, or very similar neighbors being separated. Our third priority was communities of interest. A community of interest is a population that lives near each other and shares social or economic interests. This means that whenever and wherever possible, they should not be divided into separate districts because that would dilute their ability to have their voices heard in representation. Whenever possible, the commission attempted to keep communities of interest intact, based on our understanding of what these were across the entirety of the city. We also took into account the removal of I-81. The demographics of the area around the highway were carefully considered. Ultimately, the completion of the I-81 project and the changes it will bring to the affected communities are too far in the future to be predicted with any accuracy, and the commission determined that it would focus its draft map on the current status of this area. And last but not least, we look at the resources within the districts. The commission tried to ensure that resources like grocery stores, parks, transportation, et cetera, are included in some districts as the communities that use them. This should allow each district common counselor to advocate for the services that their constituents use or to push for things that their constituents lack.
As a commission, we contracted with the Benjamin Center at SUNY New Paltz and Jeffrey Weiss of New York Census and Redistricting Institute for legal, logistical, and data analysis assistance. These consultants who are joining us on WebEx today, these consultants draw on decades of experience in redistricting and they advise us, but the map is the product of the citizens of this commission, based on the priorities that we just mentioned. This draft map is a product of compromise. There were places where we were unable to draw the exact line that we would have liked, since that would have led to districts that were unbalanced and beyond the 5% allowed deviation. With only five common council districts and 26 distinct and historical neighborhoods in the city of Syracuse, each district must reflect the diversity of the city, rather than consisting only of similar demographics. Today marks the beginning of our second round of public hearings, which will extend through June 14th, and we're here to hear your comments and reactions to this map. We're also here to listen and to answer any questions that you have. After these public hearings, we will advise, revise the draft map as necessary based on your feedback, while keeping within the laws and requirements of the commission's priorities intact. Then we will present another version of the map for you to view and have comments to before we submit it to the common council on August 1st. So with that said, don't all rush at once. We're going to open the floor and have some comments for you to be able to give us your impressions of the maps and what you're hoping to see in this next draft. And our commissioners will be happy to answer your questions. We have Graham working the map tonight, so we can be a little bit interactive and kind of show, maybe, yeah, we had that idea too, and here's maybe why it didn't work, but, um, or hey, that's a good idea, we didn't think of that at all, let's play around. And so it's an intimate crowd here tonight, so maybe we can have a little fun with our interactive map. So the floor is yours. I do ask that you be respectful with your comments. Thank you. Oh, and you have to, you have to come right up to the microphone, because that's the only way that our lovely WebEx audience can hear you.
My name's Casia Hills. I'm a resident of the Valley area of Syracuse, so I think that'd be District A here on the draft plan. But my question is more so, I'm here, I'd like to learn about some of the thoughts that went into the decisioning of the border or the boundary line between like the yellow and the purple here? That's... Sure. Oh, so I should face this way? Oh, sorry. Again, my name's Casia Hills. I'm a resident of the Valley area of Syracuse, so District A in the proposed draft plan. And the question I'd want to propose here tonight is, I'd like to get more information and insight on the boundary setting between the yellow and the purple area on the map, solely because having grown up in that area of Syracuse, you know, the Meadowbrook-Westcott area, it seems kind of odd to me that there's a split on Salt Springs opposed to maybe Erie Boulevard or some other area.
Yeah, so we're looking here on the map. Can folks... Casia, can you see?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks.
Great. So, make sure, it's a little fuzzy up there. Oh, maybe I wore my glasses. Our initial thought, so first of all, we identified that this area between Erie Boulevard, down to Salt Springs at least, and maybe down to Genesee, certain, but this part above Salt Springs is certainly a neighborhood, is a community that shares economic and social interests. And part of what Molly said, one of our priorities was to keep such communities intact as much as possible. Our initial thought was to have the dividing line be down here on Genesee, on East Genesee. And so to have this whole region between Erie, actually, sorry, let me back up. My initial thought was to have Erie Boulevard be the dividing line. Let me show what happens.
Okay.
So, I'm going to... And you can tell me where to stop. I'm going to start painting these districts purple. And I don't know if you can see in the left-hand column there, it's very fuzzy, but the populations... So the district, it's numbered three on this computer version of the map, is at 29850.
Okay.
So if I start painting these purple, here, let's do it like this. Like so, and like so, and I'm gonna, I stopped at West Moreland. I actually don't know whether that's the, is that where you would stop that, that neighborhood?
For the sake of the example, yeah, that's fine.
So, and again, it's really fuzzy, but here you can see that this, we moved about 4,500 people.
Yeah.
And as Molly said, the whole range from the top, the biggest to the littlest can only be 1,500.
Right.
So we've done a huge, we've done a huge change to the map.
Right.
So this has to be accommodated somewhere else.
Right.
And 1,500 people, while it, it's a fairly dense area.
Mm-hmm.
So if we wanted to move 1,500 people from purple now into yellow, so just to do a straight swap between purple and yellow.
Yeah.
They would have to come from this area here probably, right?
Is there an option to borrow, for lack of a better term, from the other side of there?
Yes.
Okay.
But I wanted to say the simplest thing to do would be just to do a straight swap, to only involve two districts, right?
Mm-hmm.
But when we look at what's available to us to move from purple into yellow.
Yeah.
It really is university neighborhood. It's very, I mean, this whole sort of Fellows, Westcott, Thornden Park is a very university-ish neighborhood.
Right.
And it would seem weird to not have it be in with the Syracuse University.
Agreed.
So, that sort of shoots down the easiest possible solution.
I see, yeah.
So, but that's fine. As you said, we could involve more districts.
Mm-hmm.
So, if we're going to now take something away from the purple, from E here, the only other place to take it away from, or excuse me, to give it to, is to A. Right? That's the only other one, well, I guess maybe we could give it to the blue one here, but that gives it a long, narrow, yeah, sort of a tentacle or a tendril, they might call it.
Okay.
Which we try to avoid. One of the things that Molly's mentioned was we try to have compact shapes.
Right. Yeah.
They don't have to be, you know, circles, but relatively compact shapes.
Yeah.
So it seems like that has to come from A.
Yeah.
Or, excuse me, go to A, right? So we would have to take one of this area down here, for example, Outer Comstock, and put that into District A, which would dilute the majority-minority district we've got constructed in A. Also, Outer Comstock is less densely populated, so we'd have to take a really big chunk of it. Also, one of the things that we heard at our public meetings was the folks living in Outer Comstock, who are currently separated from the university area by the districts as they currently stand.
Yeah.
Would prefer to be in with the university neighborhood. So we would be directly going against what they asked us to do.
Right. That's helpful information. Thank you. My follow-up question is, with this new draft, with the boundary on Salt Springs for the reasons you explained, would that mean the students in that neighborhood have to now... Would they still be able to go to H.W. Smith, or would they have to go to some other...
For sure. Nothing would change except where they, who they vote for.
Oh, okay. Well, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name's Jose Marrero, and I'm a lifelong resident of the Near West Side. I'm, got you. Thank you. So, I just wanted to come up and say that I do like the new draft map. It seems to kind of have gotten, like, it seems that you guys took into consideration the population change in the West Side and how it has extended over into the Strathmore area a little bit. What I do, my question would be, what district's seen the most changes as far as like the lineage and population changes? If someone can answer that question for me.
You mean the previous ones?
So, so one of the biggest changes was the North Side. They had around 4,000 more people in their district compared to what the mean should have been.
Got you.
So it's like the biggest change you'd see.
Okay.
It's a lot more compact when it comes to density of the population, so you see it's a lot smaller now.
Yes.
The West Side, for instance, is the least densely populated, so it's the biggest. So you see those kind of changes.
Okay.
Another big one that you might notice would be previously the Valley, on the Southern Peninsula almost, would kind of reach up and then with two hands, branch out like that.
Yes.
Looks very goofy. So, this change made it a little bit more compact.
Got you.
And we wanted to keep East Side as much East Side and the university as much university, where before the university area was split almost right down the middle of it. So those are kind of like the biggest visual changes you'll notice.
Got you. And what about the downtown area? Was that included into, or has it always been part of District B, or was it split up at some point as well?
It was a part of two to possibly three districts, depending on where you thought downtown was, because it's kind of arbitrary.
Yeah.
We thought between us council members, as well as public opinion, downtown residents closely aligned with Franklin Square residents and the Inner Harbor.
Yeah.
So when we were making the map, that was one of our thought processes, is having kind of a buddy neighborhood.
Okay.
When we started making the bigger districts, is who can these buddy neighborhoods be? And then kind of make the districts along those lines. So downtown's buddy neighborhood was Franklin Square slash Inner Harbor.
Okay. And, that's pretty much it. I just, you know, if I think of any other questions, I'll come up again, but thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Cool.
I'm just going to speak also a little bit more to the example that we did before, where we kind of moved that 45 down, because Salt Springs is undoubtedly East Side, and so that makes complete sense. Okay, so if we did that, and then we had to borrow, we go around the clock here, and we borrow from A, okay, so maybe we lose that minority-majority district, but okay. And then we keep going. Eventually, we would get to another key point, I'll speak for myself, for me, was that North Side. Before the North Side was split in half, and it had the North Side, but also a piece of Eastwood and Sedgwick, which frankly are very, very different from how you would view the North Side. And so the fact that we've been able to contain it so nicely is a point of real pride, but if we got to the goal around the clock and we have to cut up the North Side, we would have to, to create that 4,500 back into District D that we had originally taken from. And so, this is, this has been our process when we have done this mapping, is when you focus your attention on one area, it's going to affect another area. And so, it was, it's been a very frustrating process for us to kind of learn that, like, this is where the line should go. Oh, but we can't put it there. So, so I thank you for asking those questions, because it gives us something to look at again of maybe we need to circle back around and like see, and just like see what those numbers are. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm doing double duty here, so I'm not going to post myself talking, but as someone who lives right behind Brooklyn Pickle West, this is a great map, because it takes an area, because we're one mile from destiny, and we're closely associated with so many areas, and yet, the West Tennessee Street line tends to define us. By putting this entire area together, it will put emphasis on that entire area as a unit, as opposed to it being split. But as someone who's a lifelong resident, who grew up in, on the edge of the 15th Ward, and that was my playground, this is a great map. For someone who's grown up here and seen the shifts in population, kudos to all of you who did this, because this is an excellent representation of what this city is. Thank you.
I'm sorry. All right. What if we, so, from things that were said last night, and just now, what if you did what she suggested? I'm sorry, what was your name? Casia? What if we did what Casia suggested? And we brought that District E line up? Because that does make sense. I agree with both of you on that, to Erie Boulevard. Okay. Okay. Now, what if we went, because the other bone of contention was that DeWitt-Holly Ave neighborhood? What if we brought the North Side from, leave it at DeWitt or however you did it, because I don't know exactly how the census tract goes? And then, can you come down? Hang on.
So, maybe it's easy, I don't know, can you see what's on the screen here? It might be easier for us all to see if we're all pointing at the same thing. So that curvy one is Sedgwick Drive.
Right, and that's what people, and that's what people were saying last night and a little bit on Sunday.
There was mass confusion. There was, there was mass confusion. So the curvy thing is Sedgwick Drive, the line is on DeWitt. Oak Street is two blocks over from DeWitt.
Right.
And that's where some folks thought that we had drawn the line, because the labeling on this printout map is bad.
Got you.
So are you suggesting we use Sedgwick, or Oak, or something else?
No. Just take Holly, this Holly Ave neighborhood.
Huh. Oh, I see. Sorry. I misunderstood. Yeah, that's, so we're making, we made D smaller on the south, and now we're making D smaller on the west as well. So D is getting double hit. No, it was 4,000, 4,500.
And just, those are the three things that keep coming up, that Oak, DeWitt, Salt Springs, like...
One, two, one? Nope. Hello? Maybe it's me.
So I just also want to address the Salt Springs issue. So, let's say we add Salt Springs, and then we work the map out so everything is evened out within that 5%. This is what our fear is, that we're going to have to cut a neighborhood in half. And so what we're doing is we're keeping Salt Springs whole, and if people are concerned about their representation, per se, because all of your neighbors, you know all your neighbors, you all can organize in your community, as opposed to another neighborhood being cut in half completely. I mean, we've snipped off pieces of neighborhoods, only because that's the way the blocks work. And I think what happens is people don't understand that if there's a block that has some houses on it, that's 20 people, and then another block has an apartment building that's 50 people, that throws the numbers off. So that's why we kept Salt Springs the way it is. But like we've all said, and we'll keep saying, we'll go back, we'll torture Jeff to figure out how we can make blocks work, or whatever the case may be. This is not the final process.
I have a question to ask, and that seems to be my role here. Are you concerned about Salt Springs on either side being divided, or that it's not in E, or it's not in B? I mean, what is the, what is the issue regarding Salt Springs that you would wish we rectified?
I don't, I don't know. I just feel that it's probably what people are saying, like over and over and over.
That it's divided, or that it's in the wrong direction?
She's not even going to answer. She wants to know. It's not her fault.
Would you like to say?
As I was saying, now, the people in that area, I work for that area, and I'm here still trying to leave that area, I think the issue is that it just doesn't, how we have the people in the neighborhoods, it doesn't align, we would never consider it part of the tribe. I mean, that's by point of any real extension here. It doesn't change anything other than, yeah, with representation, but we're just considering what we call neighborhoods. Salt Springs is definitely a shit that, that's true. Like, for here's a bar, that will certainly be on the side of that, because it's a private succeed, it's like, it's a privilege. So, yeah.
Would that, does that neighborhood, that East Side neighborhood we're speaking of, will align more with, because right next to it's the university? So is it, yeah, like the university, or the, or then on the north side of Erie Boulevard, you have, then you're getting the Eastwood, right? So because they're in the middle of the two, and the one neighborhood's not big enough, so you need to graph population, it's like, it's like the one or the other?
Graham, can you pull up the demographics report for the, the community of interest there? That, you know, how the situation, that's what they...
Yeah, it's, uh, here.
So another thing that factored into our decision to put it there is if we knew that it could not fit in with the larger east, um, east side district, hugging that line, this dark bit over on the right-hand corner, that's, that's the Salt Springs area. And this is a concentrated black area. And so it was really important to us, if we couldn't unite them with the east side where they belong, at least keeping them together. And so making sure we had that was really, really important to us. And we did not want to split it anywhere within, above that line. Just to give some people more into the east side. So we, that's why it's, it follows that because we're looking at this data.
So the apartment, the, 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 the. You can't, it's multiple buildings.
We, we were thinking about voting power for that group.
I mean, they're like, they're like, we didn't like. I get it. I just, I see both sides of the equation. Look, I'm getting involved. My daughter, I'm not a man. I was part of, it's, it's.
We just, we just.
The floors are open. And I know we talk about this in particular, but like recessions.
We'll be living with the ten minutes, so keep talking.
I, I, I do want to say something. I mean, I know we're not.
Yeah, just saying.
So you asked a question, Cassia, about this, the impact of our decisions or our recommendations, not just on voting, but on schools and things like that. This has nothing to do with any of it, right? Like the feeder schools, nothing to do with that. This is just about where people vote.
But, but there is still a relationship in it. If park that your kids go to is the same district where you live, pick up the phone to call your district councillor about glass in that park, they're more motivated to give you a hand. If that park was across the line in some other district councillor's district,
Correct.
they might not be so motivated.
Correct. And so that, that's a great point that he makes. I'm just clarifying that we're not changing the feeder schools for Nottingham. Corkburn or Hanniger, that, that has no impact on.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just to speak to our process, even it was a question that we asked ourselves early on. We try to make sure that each of the high schools is in one district, you know? And like, and so like we looked at that and then we were like, oh, but like we have two high schools really close to one another and then we have some odd shaped districts. And so, um, we decided that because it has no bearing on really this, you know, you can go to any school for high school especially, um, that we said, okay, well, let's not have that be something that we worry about because it won't be impacted by this. So that, that just shows our process that we got the same things, yeah. You can speak.
Are the mics working?
From the computer, the standard gram.
The standard gram. Okay. John Hamlin, one of the commissioners. Something Tony's been saying at the last couple of meetings, um, and I'm going to steal his thunder tonight. One of the first questions that we had when we first started getting into this process is there are so many different neighborhoods with so many different priorities in Syracuse. Why do we only have five counties and districts? Okay. We asked the question. It's a great question and we've got a answer that we have to live with. The answer is it would result, it would be the result of a change in the city charter. And that's not as easy to do as changing an ordinance. The ordinance that created us and governed how we've done this job is just a local law. To create, because we all decided, well, we need 15, 20 districts to get everybody to have their neighborhood be recognized. And because it's a charter change, that's something that the council has to consider. Probably lead to a referendum, okay? And then once that's voted on, it, it's really got to go very far to make that change. We've considered it. We've asked for it and we were told you may not do it this time. So at the end of this process, we're going to do a report. Basically a love letter to the next commission in 78 years. In 2031, there's going to be another commission of citizens in Syracuse. Our experience of having these lines has led to people saying, we need more districts and we totally agree. So that change is in the future. I hope all of you are still living here when that, when that happens. And, uh, you'll have to advocate for it because nobody likes to change. But if it's necessary, we have to make it happen as citizens. Thanks.
Hello, are we back?
Contact your common councillor.
Common council, the mayor.
Your councillor, your councillors at large, the mayor.
President.
Yeah.
Not, not the United States president.
Start one of those petition things online, you know? There's any number of ways.
Public opinion, reporters, neighborhood groups.
But careful with that because if you go to the reporter from St. Louis or next week, it might make us look bad. Wait till we're done.
That's, that's it, it's just a, it's just a matter of building interest in it. And enough people are interested in it, then the politicians will listen.
Does the council come, come up with a vote back?
But say yes or no. Nick King. Say no, come back to us. Make edits and we submit and. Take Dan. But if they don't, we can re-serve the same thing and vote it through.
And tell us why they don't like it.
The, the pressure's on them, not us.
Anything else?
It's a, it's a reservoir. The water? Yeah. Yeah.
No, it's a reservoir. There are no houses there. It's only, it's, it's part of the city. It's a city name, political, it can be a.
There are a couple houses.
No, I think the, the lines are drawn to avoid the house. Maybe on that street? But this is the, you can see the, the water tower.
It's very strange.
Yeah.
Mixed blood map.
And then I'm looking at this, at District B and I see a map. These some streets are not represented on there. You know, if you could zoom in and see, um, that Markland is on there.
You'll have to direct me. I don't know.
Um, it's over by Stowe.
Is it like north of, um, West Anadaga? Like, or west?
No.
Down to Stowe, they're heading down to Strathmore. All right, let me get my bearings. If you go up South Gethes.
Up South Gethes?
Yeah. Markland should be to the left of that, in that little area where they're on those streets named.
Going south.
Going south.
Going south.
Up means north, I mean, sorry.
Going, going south.
South. Now here, down towards Corkburn?
Yeah, not all the way by Colton, but, uh, let's say by Bellevue.
Bellevue Elementary School?
Yeah. So. Sorry, this isn't my part of town. I'm sort of bumbling around here. There's Stowe, I got Stowe.
Follow that path.
Like east, so it goes east or west?
Yeah, tell me east or west. I don't know where the hills are in this area.
Right there. So Markland should be somewhere in the area.
I know.
Other way.
But, I'm sorry, they're on the ring.
I've got six different people telling me, no, there's Markland. There's never any question. It's in the heart of.
So, so you mentioned before about the, how the common councillors are going to be voting on it? So two or three years ago, when they, when, before we even got created, they voted to increase their power because they would be normally the ones that would be doing this process. They were top us. Today, they only two voted no. But almost super majority voted, here's the people. So we go through the process and get the input and give you a lot of map. To that, we vote with no, we kind of have a critical in our brains. We'll see, must have been really screwed up, which undoubtedly they are. So.
One of the snows has changed.
Right. Yep.
You can, yes.
But the majority voting yes are still in office. And one of the dollars is taken personally. So it's looking, but it's not the process, but the next step would be.
Okay, so I mean, we're, you know, we're, we're trying here, so I really appreciate this. And I think that this was actually just really nice to have an intimate setting. So thank you for spending your night with us. The next meeting will be June 2nd, Thursday, 2nd, and it's going to be at the Northeast Community Center.
What might happen?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.